Okay, we're gonna start. Okay, everyone, welcome to our January 19th Board of Education meeting. Our first order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. Our first order of business is approval of minutes. If I need a motion, please.
Sue, I'll move it.
Moved by Sue, second by Adrian. Anybody have any additions, deletions, or questions on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. I need a motion, please.
Lynn, I'll move it.
Lynn moves it. Second by Christine. Anybody have any questions or anything they want removed from the consent agenda to talk about? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is adopted. Our next item is certified personnel. Dr. Fox.
We've got the challenge pointed to the position assistant in the Nanyuette School District for probationary appointment in the teaching assistant tenure area effective 1/11/21 to 1/11/25.
Motion, please.
Ed will move it.
Moved by Ed. Second by...
Sue, I'll second it.
Second by Sue. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Resolve that Elisa Moran, psychologist in the Nanyuette School District, be granted an extended leave of absence without pay effective 2/27/21 to 6/25/21.
Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Moved by Christine, second by Adrian. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried.
Resolve that Jessica Alba be appointed to the position regular substitute school psychologist in Nanyuette School District effective 2/27/21 to 6/25/21.
Motion, please. Moved by Ed.
A second.
Second by Lynn. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Resolve that the following individual be approved as a substitute teacher and teaching assistant retroactive to 1/11/21, Jamie Ianna-Rilly.
Motion, please.
Sue, I'll move it.
Moved by Sue.
I'll second.
Second by Adrian. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Thank you, Dr. Fox. Next up on our agenda is our budget transfers. Mr. Spagnolo.
It is resolved that the Nanyuette Board of Education approves the attached authorization for budget transfer dated January 19th, 2021, in the amount of $292,231 for the general fund.
Motion, please. Moved by Ed.
Move it.
By Christine. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Our next item is our superintendent's report. Dr. McHale.
Okay, yes, thank you, Ms. Byrne. Hold on one sec. Let me get my phone out here. Okay, so superintendent's report from Principal Mahoney. The Nanyuette Senior High School Guidance Department hosted an evening program for parents and guardians of juniors on January 14th. The presentation provided a framework for the post-secondary process. An overview and description of tools and supports are in place to assist in this important process were reviewed. The process at Nanyuette High School, the post-secondary timeline, admissions criteria, athletic requirements, college admissions processes, types, careers, exploration, and financial aid, scholarship information, Navient support, important website addresses, and the other important communication approaches such as Schoology were covered. Thank you to our Guidance Department for this informative presentation. From our bar principal and Mr. Guccione, as well as Principal Ann Chen, it's all about school spirit in our academy bar. The students at A. MacArthur Bar Middle School and Grade 5-6 Academy returned this week with a little bit of extra spirit. The whole building came back on Monday celebrating Spirit Week by wearing bright colors, colorful masks to celebrate the return to our school campus. On Tuesday, our knights showed off their spirit by wearing their black and gold to celebrate our community. Thursday, we enjoyed silly crazy sock day where we got to see the students' unique personalities all across their feet. Friday's culminating activity was a color war theme where each grade was assigned a color to wear to school. The Spirit Week was well received by all students and staff, grade 5 through 8, go Golden Knights. From our Hyview principal, Ms. Nancy Bonner, our students returned to school with smiling eyes and thumbs up. We were thrilled to welcome them back, and now it's all about the numbers at Hyview. Our math curriculum is moving forward for our 3rd and 4th graders as they hone their expertise with multiplication and problem solving. We can't wait to delve into fractions. From our Miller principal, Ms. Mary Ellen Griffin, thank you to Melissa Lipson, our K4 Guidance Counsel for creating her guidance page that included a virtual counseling corner. It offers students, families, and staff a one-stop location for all things to assist with social, emotional well-being. And thank you to Mr. Palisi for getting this wonderful resource added to our Miller homepage. So that's another resource for all of our knights to utilize. And last, but certainly not least, from the Family Resource Center Director, Ms. Roseanne Mercado, Ms. Ariel's class read many stories about how important it is to be kind. The students participated in a group of activity using sandpaper to represent unkind words and cotton to represent kind words. The children were given pictures and decided whether it was kind or unkind actions. Super important that we get this curriculum to our young knights as they begin their curriculum journey here in school with us. Ms. Barbara and Ms. Kelly's classes focused on winter activities. The children had the opportunity to make their own snow and snow person. They also did a melting snowman experience using packing peanuts and water. They ended their week by turning their rooms into ice skating rinks and sipping on hot chocolate. So that's everything from our pre-K through 12th grade. A lot of spirit and a lot of optimism for the future. So thank you to all of our principals for the community listening. As always, my superintendent report outside of me reading everything here, there's a deeper dive on my website, on the school district website for you to read a little bit more about each things that I talk about here live. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Dr. McHale. Next up is unfinished business. And the first thing, Dr. McHale, is the questions that you have received from the public.
Yes, so we received one question in the public forum this week, and I would just sort of paraphrase it. I think it speaks a lot to how our community's feeling and probably how we're all feeling about the malaise of this pandemic. We're all starting to reach sort of the end of our rope in terms of our stamina for quarantining and the pandemic. And we're, as a parent of a kindergartner, a 5th grader, and a 7th grader myself, it's getting harder and harder to be home with our kiddos. But one of our community members wrote and asked if the district would consider creating sort of a cohort of students that have already experienced COVID. They've had COVID. They've lived through the experience of COVID-19 and are now sort of on the other side of that mountain, which presumably they may have antibodies and would the district consider some sort of allowance for them to come in every day or possibly be their own class at each grade level? You know, and then they wrote, you know, change of scenery, getting the kids back in school, you know, would be highly welcomed by their family. So, you know, although I am sympathetic and empathetic to, you know, the request, you know, the risk calculus around whether or not children or adults who've had COVID are in fact safe to kind of traverse life as it was prior to the pandemic is still questionable. You know, we don't know whether they're carriers and could be, you know, somewhat risky for our adult employees, our teachers, our monitors, our bus drivers, you know, and so whether or not it's even a healthy experiment to, you know, for us to allow, to pilot for our children. So I would say at this time, you know, it's not an experiment that I would feel comfortable, again, with the calculus of COVID right now, with the new strains that they're talking about, you know, could kids get sick with a different strain after they've already had a different one? You know, I have to defer to staying the course of where we are right now, sticking with our cohorts, Cohort A, Cohort B. We gain a whole lot of opportunity to stay alive by being a Cohort A, a Cohort B, with a Wednesday in between. I can't tell you how many times we've contact traced back from a positive case on campus and were relieved that either that family was a B family and they weren't on campus earlier in the week, and therefore all of those teachers now still remain active and live teachers, or, you know, another family, something got them over the weekend and it turned out that on Wednesday was the 48 hours earlier, and, you know, they were virtual that day. So there's just really so many nuances to our hybrid schedule that I just, I don't know if I would feel comfortable creating a small, you know, sort of subschedule of post-COVID COVID kids that would come to school every day, you know, not to mention the fact that scheduling our kids and their relationships with their teachers is so complex. If we were to do that, I could tell you with confidence, we would have to change students' teachers. If we were to reassign teachers to just the former COVID kids, K-12, there would be a whole host of teachers in the Nanyuette community that would be reassigned, and so families would be reassigned to new teachers. So it's just, it's a domino effect of shifts. So although I highly respect that there's no judgment on the request from the family, I more or less feel empathy for what they were requesting because we're all feeling like, you know, we are just dying to go back to the way schools operated prior to this pandemic. What I can use is maybe this a little bit as a jumping point to talk about conversations with some of our elected officials. Ken Zabrowski, you know, Ken Zabrowski, you know, in particular, has been fantastic. He's always a champion for Nanyuette. I had a long conversation with Ken on Saturday of this weekend. He's doing everything he can to get vaccines specifically earmarked for schools and school personnel, because we know now more than ever that your public schools are at the heart of the fabric of your community. If we can be sustainable and stay open and have children come to us for eight to 10 hours a day and have our staff healthy and work with our kids as we do traditionally, the rest of the economy can churn, our families can get focused on the things that they have to focus on to serve their families. And so I think right now, the hope is to just really look at the bright skies ahead, that this vaccine is where all of us should focus our attention, not creating smaller pockets of sort of new ways of pulling kids onto campus. So, you know, I respectfully going to say to that question, it's not something I'm looking to do right now, and I really, really am optimistic about vaccines in Rockland County, vaccines for our school personnel, so that we could start looking at bluer skies ahead for our schools and for our community. And that was it. That was only, there was only one.
Thank you, Dr. McHale. But just to comment on that, if you do get COVID, you can get COVID again, and we do not know how long immunity lasts. It may last a month or two months. We do not know. So it would be, it would be just as if they didn't ever had COVID.
Yeah, the science is, the science is just not concrete. Yeah, and I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to play, play that experiment out with children in our school.
But thank you for that. Next up on our unfinished business, and I'm really looking forward to this, is a presentation from KSQ Architects, and this is about our building survey. And just so everybody out there knows, every five years, New York State tells school districts that they have to update their five-year plan on what's going on with their facilities and with their buildings. So this is our report for our building survey. So, Armand.
It's possible, Armand. Yeah, he may, he may not be, is he here?
I'm here.
Oh, hey. Can't, just can't not see your face.
Let me see if I can. It says unable to start video.
Chris, I know.
Chris, what? Hi there. Hello, everyone.
Okay. Hi, welcome.
And I think we're going to start the slide deck.
Yeah, I'm on. I'll share the screen with the slide. Just let me know when you want to advance it.
Okay. And I'm joined tonight by senior associate in our firm, Ophi Clark. And Ophi led the team of architects and engineers that went through all the schools. As Ann Byrne mentioned, the five-year capital plan is mandated by all school districts in the state. Go ahead, Chris. You can move ahead. And it is, it is essentially a facility conditions audit, a top to bottom, from the roof to the basement, windows, ventilation, mechanical systems assessment associated with budget costs and prioritization. And the idea here is to create a long-range plan for the school district so that incremental investments can be made over time that add up to a coherent whole. And really, if we think of our own home, when the roof needs replacement or major repairs or needed to the heating system, it's really important that we make those updates so that we protect the quality of the home and it as an asset. And so that's in a nutshell kind of what the five-year plan is about. The five-year plan is a living document, so it's one that we update. We work with your director of facilities, Rudy Villiani, every month, every year to tick off projects that are completed. It is a systemic review, and again, we do prioritize and then establish budget costs at the end of the presentation. A need for the five-year plan, far and away, the biggest need is created by aging infrastructure. So building facility systems that are beyond their serviceable life, especially that relate to the health and safety of the students, come up to the top of our plan and receive the highest priority. Changing enrollment can create need, evolving education program needs. So if we think about how technology has evolved and been added to the classroom over recent decades, all these things contribute to, as well as student social and emotional needs, contribute to the need that's part of the five-year plan. Everybody that's part of the Nanyuette community is a stakeholder in the five-year plan process or the long-range planning effort. And this is obviously an evening when we're touching the school board and community and others as we move forward. So each of the four schools in the district, and I'll just mention to you that Ophi's team and I put together probably 60 pages of detailed line items that go through every single element of each of the four schools. And for tonight, we've kind of rolled that into a summary slide deck of about 25 pages. So this will give the community a really good snapshot of the types of issues that are present in the district. There are costs mentioned in a summary format. I just want to caution that there's no requirement that the school district undertake any of these updates at the moment. This is a long-range plan, and it's a, it's a planning document for the school board and for Dr. McHale and his team to look at costs over time. So for the Nanyuette Senior High School, we're looking at the aerial imagery, and the notes here call for traffic calming measures. We want to just make sure that vehicles that are driving between the middle high school campus are driving at the right speed. There's additional sidewalks that are called for to enhance safety and walking from the faraway lot on Church Avenue where the students park. And again, really just making sure that the campus is as safe as possible. These are typically low-cost items, but they really enhance safety on campus. This next slide includes exterior items like windows, roofs, and brick, interior items within the school, and then MEP stands for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, our engineering systems. So our green leaf means that an item on the list is sustainable. It has either a healthy building or a payback because it reduces our carbon footprint and energy usage within the school. A lot of these lists are very typical, and they relate to infrastructure needs in all of the schools. There are various windows at the high school that require replacement. Sometimes it's the lock sets or the locking mechanisms that have failed over time. We do have some single-pane windows that are not good on energy usage and so on. So those are part of the plan. There's a district-wide roof replacement that's called for. Our roofs are essentially at or reaching the end of their serviceable life. There are some minor areas where there's leaks and so on. So to be proactive and plan for roof replacement is extremely important. Brick buildings over time always require repointing and update. This is not a holistic repointing, but different areas where water has penetrated and so on. We do ADA stands for Americans with Disabilities Act, and there are areas where either ramps or railings need to be updated to meet the current code and also canopies. Now, moving to interiors, the high school auditorium is on the long-range plan for update. Another theme of the five-year plan is adding security vestibules at each of the four schools. So that's really common now that there's, and sometimes we call it a man trap, but the idea is that a visitor to the school is invited into a soft vestibule, tell us your business, look at your ID, and then gets a badge and is allowed admittance into the school. So security vestibules are a really important piece of the program in the five-year plan. At the high school, we have an elevator that needs upgrades, and an additional elevator is proposed to get to an inaccessible part of the school at the lower level, replacing older doors and hardware that are beyond their serviceable life. And again, you start to see a certain cadence and repetitiveness to the types of the projects. On the mechanical, electrical, plumbing side, and everyone is familiar with the needs associated with COVID and ventilation and making sure that the schools are being ventilated and the filters are working the way that they're supposed to be, and where improvements and upgrades can happen, that those are being proposed as well. So replacing air handling units and unit ventilators that are beyond their serviceable life, upgrading original electrical panels. So some of the electrical systems in the schools date back to the original construction of the school. Those are scheduled for replacements. And then continuing to install LED lighting, we've done a lot of that work, but there's still a lot more to do. And then our engineer here noted additional carbon monoxide detectors. The final piece of the Global Learning Commons, which was a project completed right at the heart of the high school, that includes the dining, the library, the social heart, and other community areas of the school, includes the infill of the courtyard between the Global Learnings Common and the math wing. And the idea is to make an outdoor learning space, a social space for students, and then to meet ADA requirements to get down to the lower level of the campus. So this is the first slide where we're seeing a reference to project cost. Total project cost allocated to the high school for the 2025-year capital plan is slightly under $18 million. Again, this is, this is a footnote for filing purposes with the State Education Department. There's not a mandate or a requirement that all or part of these projects are undertaken immediately. So moving now to the middle school, again, we're still on the same broad campus with the high school. There, we believe that there are some community funding mechanisms to allow for additional sidewalks along Church Street. Again, just really focused on student safety and enhancing security on campus. And then you're seeing the typical traffic calming measures, signage, and so on. So again, small on the investment side, but big in terms of improved safety on campus. So I'm not going to go into as much detail for the other schools as I did on the high school because the types of elements that comprise exterior, interior, and MEP start to become repetitive. But at all the schools, there are some windows that are beyond their serviceable life that require replacement. The middle school has these kind of cool mid-century modern sun shades that project from the building. In some cases, they're beyond their serviceable life. They should either be removed or rechained and restabilized to the facade, brick repointing and other deteriorated structural elements on the facade. Again, front and center on interior is the new security vestibule, super important at the middle school. Gymnasium upgrades, locker room upgrades, and a lot of these spaces relate to the original construction of the school. In addition, elevator replacement, and we're an ongoing toilet room upgrades and replacements. On the mechanical, electrical plumbing side, there's some old hot water storage tanks that should be removed from the school, as well as, again, upgraded electrical panels. These original electrical panels, it's almost impossible to find parts for, and so we kind of end up jerry-rigging. And it's just really important that these are scheduled for replacement over time. The rest of the RTUs and LED lighting you've seen on the list for the high school. Total project cost for the middle school is slightly over $20 million. And again, I'll just mention that these references to costs are total project costs. So they include financing costs, escalation, construction contingency, not just the bricks and mortar costs. Moving now to Hyview Elementary School, this is, of course, our standalone elementary school. There is a potential to borrow some of the parking lot at the Grace Baptist Church that's on the other side of Church Street. So we've created an allowance to stripe that and do some pavement improvements to make that safe parking. And then we've proposed in red a sidewalk that would take us from that new parking lot back to Hyview. So Hyview is always lacking enough parking space, whether that's for faculty or visitors, parents, and so on. So we're always looking for parking inventory for Hyview. Hyview, again, I'm going to go right to the interior, the middle column there, the proposed security vestibule, really important. Most schools in the region have or are planning to provide secure vestibules as part of the entry sequence for visitors to the school. And again, that's front and center on all the plans. The gymnasium/auditorium, beautiful historic space at the heart of the school, needs some upgrades, seating replacement and so on. Kitchen ceiling, the FRP panels or the scrubbable panels in the kitchen are slated for replacement, as well as miscellaneous areas where water's gotten into the school. And again, you're seeing that the list becomes repetitive now for each of the schools. And then finally, our youngest students at the Miller Elementary School. Again, Miller, similar to Hyview, is also facing a parking inventory request where we could afford to add a few more parking spaces. We have about 10 spaces identified here. On certain occasions, it's hard for all the buses to queue onto the Miller campus, and we've proposed right along the main street there in front of the school, a pull-off where two more buses could stack and queue in that area. Sidewalk and pavement improvements, just a standard sort of fare to keep the campus safe and accessible. Miller is our only one-story school in the district. The exterior, and it also is calling for replacement of the ballasted roof. It's actually an old-style roof with a membrane and little pebbles on top to hold the roof down, and that will be replaced with a contemporary rubber-style down and that will be replaced with a contemporary rubber style roof with a 20 year warranty. And so again, you're seeing a lot of, you know, common elements that are typical to all the schools. Miller's our only school with the kindergarten wing. And so those individual toilets are called for upgrades on the mechanical, electrical plumbing side, upgrade for plumbing fixtures, exhaust fans, continue with LED lighting upgrades and replacements, upgraded electrical panel systems and fire alarm. And of course, Miller would also have super important its own secure vestibule at, at the building's main entrance. I'm sorry, Chris. We're slightly over 14 million total project cost with all the line items added together for the Miller Elementary School. We also have, as, as community is aware, the outdoor education center has a couple of small buildings on it, about $200,000 of essentially just making sure the water stays out with an, and also ADA upgrades proposed, not upgrades, ADA compliance measures are called for there. And then last building is, is the maintenance building. It's, it's behind the high school at the lower level. There are some deterioration of the metal skin that requires just, you know, clean up and button up, roof flashing as well as repair to some of the water, water damage that's created in that building. The heating is original to the building and is beyond its serviceable life, needs to be upgraded and some electrical service upgrades. So 430,000 of total project cost at the maintenance building. Next slide is our summary of, of all the infrastructure improvements, slightly under $60 million. And again, I, I know that this is a very big number, but nonetheless it's, it's a top to bottom review that happens every five years. And your district has really invested wisely to tick off many, many of the older projects that would make this number much, much higher compared to some districts that haven't made those investments. A couple more chapters left in the presentation. The school district has asked us to, with an athletic planner, look at athletic needs district wide. Perhaps the sort of the kingpin or the hinge pin of the plan is to consider synthetic turf in Nanuet. You are one of the three districts in your athletic, the other district that you compete in that doesn't have synthetic turf. So we, we agree that it was very logical to consider turf for your, for your athletic master plan. So the Jerry Leo field is the existing field layout is depicted at the top of this slide. It is an old fashioned or old school layout where football was considered the king sport. It's a long and narrow field and a long and narrow track. And if you compare the white dashed box above to the white dashed box below, you can see that a multi, multi-purpose, multi-sport field that would accommodate lacrosse, soccer, field hockey, and all the other sort of common high school sports is, is a broader rectangle. So the investment is proposed to widen the track and the field to allow for multi-sport to, for the straightaway to be eight lanes instead of six. It allows you to compete at, at the highest levels in your conferences. And, and if we go to the next slide, we have some pictures of the existing conditions at Jerry Leo. This plan proposes, these are original metal bleachers. This plan proposes replacement of the bleachers, widening of the table that the synthetic, sorry, that the turf field sits on and, and creation of a really modern competition level safe outdoor stadium with proper lighting. So the bleacher capacity would be about 1,240 seats, depending on how you count. You'd get the full competition level, multi-purpose sport field as well as the competition level track that surrounds. I'll get to the cost in a moment. The athletic planner also considered a second practice synthetic turf field also on the high school campus. That's been allowed for in our costs. We looked at resurfacing existing tennis courts and then work on your, I think two of your baseball fields. And so you're seeing here at the middle school drainage improvements, this would remain natural turf, but improving drainability allows for students to get back on the field sooner after rain events. And it's just good for the health of the turf. So in addition to the infrastructure budgeting, the total budget for all of the athletic improvements that I described is slightly over $15 million of total project cost. The Jerry Leo field as a standalone, again, competition level, outdoor synthetic turf field with security fencing and lighting, slightly under $9 million of that 15. And if we look at all of the elements of the five year plan combined, and, and again, this is a living document. It actually changes from month to month as we get more direction from school district administration. And I expect tonight we'll get some more direction from the board. We'll, we'll begin to look at more refinements to this plan, but we're at slightly under 77 million of total project cost for all the initiatives that, that we've been charged to look at to this point. There are two other initiatives that we've been asked to do some homework on. First is science labs focusing primarily at the high school, but also at the middle school. You are, you know, a STEM tech oriented school district and, and especially at the high school, those science labs are, are several decades old and are dated and it's sort of beyond their serviceable life. And so considering a plan that improves science and tech labs at the high school is super important. And then in, you know, it's very common now, all of our clients ask us to think about adding air conditioning throughout the schools. You already have air conditioning in spot locations and district administrations and some of the core common areas, but, but at least understanding the costs to add air conditioning is, is very important and it's one that we're studying at, at the current time. So Dr. McHale, those are our prepared remarks for the board this evening. Happy to talk about any element of the plan. I hope I didn't talk too fast, but there's a lot of content, a lot of content to share. I know a lot to digest as well.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you, Armon. That was certainly very extensive and very in-depth. You know, and the price tag is, is of course rather large. Obviously it's not something that can be done on a capital project because we do put money in our budget every year for capital projects, but this is certainly beyond the scope of that. I think maybe in one of our future board meetings, Dr. McHale, maybe you and I can, can, when we do our agenda, we can have a conversation about, let's look at our whole, looking at this, what we just received, but let's look at our whole budget finance situation. Cause I know for example, that we have debt that's coming off in another year or two. And I remember what happened the last time we, we had to get come off and we lost an awful lot of state aid because in the middle of getting rid of our debt, they changed the rules and they kept the 2% cap and we lost a lot of money because of that. Maybe we can have in a future board meeting, a conversation that encompasses all of this. Let's look at our budget. Let's look at our state aid. Let's look at our retiring debt. Let's look at this that we just received from Armon and looking at our, our, our facilities and see what we can do and, and have a really lively discussion amongst the board and with Armon and with Mr. Spagnolo, our business person. And let's, let's take a look at what this means. And we'll just put it out there. So maybe in a future, not too, not too far in the distance. I think we should do this pretty soon.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, Ms. Byrne. Yeah, so many of the items that Armon mentioned are structural, you know, and, and we're talking about generations of knights coming through Nanuet. We want to make sure that we, we invest in these essential aspects of our buildings and start looking for the future of the school district. It's, you know, we're such a successful place, but action planning for the future is, 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 is part of our obligation and I appreciate this five year survey. It really, it really lends us a really nice roadmap for the future of this community.
Well, it kind of, it kind of, you know, shows us where we have to go. Granted, this is not a one year thing. This is, you know, over many years. So I think it would be good, but we'll talk about that soon. Great. Thank you very much for the very in-depth study. Thank you.
Thank you, Armon.
Okay. Any on the board have anything they want to say about this? Okay. Next is a presentation from our academy, our five, six reopening update. I'll hand it over to you, Dr. McHale.
Yeah, so I'd like to, I'd like to welcome Principal Ann Chen and her entire team. I, I see a lot of the, not, not the faces yet. They're going to come on our Zoom soon. I see this, a lot of snowmen right now, but they'll, they'll, their real faces will come on shortly. But I had the opportunity to preview the presentation today. So all of our, our five, six academy families out there listening in, this is really a fantastic presentation and I'm really, really proud to be a part of this team. And so Principal Chen, you and your team, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. McHale. We're going to share a screen with you, but while we're getting that set up, I just want to welcome you to this presentation. It is the culmination of every teacher at the academy contributing to the topics, the slides, the examples. And then over the course of several weeks, we called it down to what we felt were the most critical topics to share with you. Each slide is filled with a lot of information. We're going to just try to give you the highlights. The entire presentation will be posted afterwards. And I just want to kind of give you a heads up at who's presenting tonight. I'm so excited that you're going to get to meet a few of our new young staff members along with some veterans. And I just want to have you pay attention to that, that this is a combination of a lot of different staff members across different content areas. When each person selected a slide to do, it required them to reach out of their own world and learn about other subjects, other grade levels, and then represent each topic on behalf of the academy. So this is truly a full school effort. And the final presenters that you're going to get to see tonight have gone above and beyond to just find out information, determine what to share and take that few minutes to be with you. So I hope you enjoy this. I'm going to turn it over right now to our first presenter, Sam Sauer, who is one of our music teachers and he's going to talk to us about engaging kids in class.
Thank you, Ann. Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me again. My name is Sam. I'm a new teacher here at Nanuet, first year teacher, and it's so great to be here. So thank you for having me. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we're engaging our students in our classrooms this year. And boy, does it look different, right? But we really have the same foundational ideas and beliefs in the academy and we're just modifying them and building on them and challenging our other, you know, ideals. So looking first, we're sharing our work with each other. Just like usual, we are able to share our screen. We're able to share in the chat, talking on Zoom with one another. But also if you're super creative, like some people in the technology department at five and six academy, we're able to use things like Scratch, which is an online website where you're able to create some online video games using coding and things. So in the computer science unit, they were able to share their work with each other on Scratch. So if you take a look at this, it'll open up and you'll see this is an actual project that a student was able to make and share with their teacher. Excellent. Nice. So very good. We're encouraging them to respond in the chat or on discussion boards, making, making sure that we're using all of the capabilities that School G has, right? So discussion boards are a big one for us. Utilizing breakout rooms for small group and partner work. Being aware and sensitive to students who are interacting online in a large room might be a little bit more difficult to get out there. So using a variety of different things to share our work and to talk to one another and to engage in activities. Incorporating high interest topics into the curriculum and conversations. Oh my goodness, students this year have been told to how, how to live their life and how to learn in a specific way. So giving as much ownership of their learning as we can to them is really what's going to help them do well and succeed and exceed the expectations of this year. Incorporating hands-on activities, just like every other year, we want to make sure that our students are having that hands-on idea there. And this is for people who are comfortable, right? In school, obviously we're, we're following the guidelines that the CDC has, has put in place. So doing some hands-on activities for people in school, but also things at home, which you will see a little bit later in some of the, in some of the other slides. Moving on to adjusting the physical setup of the, for student participation. If you follow that little orange arrow, you'll find a video of actually my group, the five and six grade chorus singing 12 feet apart. So adjusting our classroom setup so they're still able to sing a little bit. Excellent. Yes. And that in particular is a fifth grade cohort, cohort A of my fifth grade class period three. And then finally talking a little bit about beginning each class with questions outside of the curriculum, right? We're teaching students how to participate in ways that they've never done before. And this is a year where we're not able to connect with them as much. So being able to write some questions that are totally outside of the curriculum that students really have, like who want to get onto the keyboard to unmute themselves and want to respond in the chat. So in this little tiny picture, I don't know if you can see very well, but it says milkshake or fruit smoothie? And these are, this is a poll on Zoom. So this is actually grabbed from one of my Zoom calls, but I say milkshake or fruit smoothie and I want to hear why. And then we battle to the end of which one is better, just so students are able to practice getting off of their, you know, muted microphone and muted camera for a little bit. And they can practice participating and engaging in any way that they feel comfortable. So that's a little bit about engaging students in class, but there's a ton more later on. But for right now, I think Ms. Carrie Fitzgibbon is going to talk to you a little bit about how students are engaged virtually. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hello. All right. I'm going to talk a little bit about how we use the virtual space to engage our students. Teachers like to use the breakout room in Zoom to meet with small groups of students for individualized instruction. This allows for more personal feedback from not only the teacher, but also the peers. Students also take advantage of the messaging feature in School G to communicate. On the bottom left, there's a picture of a student asking for feedback on independent projects. Teacher is able to respond and we're also able to send messages. That's just not only for projects, it's for anything else the student wants any feedback on. Teachers use School G discussion boards and the chat for do now assignments. The class is able to see each other's responses and comment off of each other. First year students also learn how to conduct and they held a virtual concert that parents and families were able to watch at home. And we have a little clip right there. And also teachers like to use incentives to have students come to class early as well as come to our Wednesday meetings. We have teacher, Ms. Spadavecchia, who likes to put riddles and jokes in the chat for students to answer as they're now. If the student gets the riddle or joke correct, they get a raffle ticket as reward. And she also uses those raffle tickets for coming to her Wednesday meetings. Now our next presenter is Sherri Dempsey, a fifth grade teacher.
Sorry. This year our focus is on the power standards. We aim for more depth than breadth. In addition, there has been time that has been needed to be dedicated to teaching students how to use technology as well as transforming paper and pencil to digital learning. We have spent a great deal on time building relationships to help motivate and engage students. Our instruction this year is much more visual than it has been in years past. The School G classrooms are accessible 24 hours a day for resources. The School G classrooms are accessible 24 hours a day for resources. This allows students to be more independent and responsible. Group projects are limited and are done virtual whenever possible. Chris, can you click on ELA? In ELA, developing readers and writers have switched between the digital platform. Teachers are transforming to the notebook that's digital using eBooks. Can you please click on the other ELA slide? Teachers are getting various books into students' hands through the computer. Discussions are held both in class, on Zoom, and in School G. Please click on math. Students have all their resources laid out on School G. There's an overview of the lesson plan for the week and a homework page. Then there are folders for each day. In each day's folder is a daily assignment, and a teacher-made video is posted to remediate the lesson that was taught in case students need extra time to practice. There are also challenge problems posted as well on School G for those students who master the concepts quickly. There's a resource folder that has important resources, including math packets, so students can do their work on paper and then put them into a Google form. These packets are sent home with students who are fully remote as well. Can you please click on the next math slide? The Google form gives immediate feedback both to the student and the teacher. The students are also using the Zern Math Program to remediate or pre-teach concepts. Teachers can monitor to see which students are struggling on which concepts. Please click on the next math slide. Teachers have created unique ways to have students practice what they've learned. An example is in this picture, it's from fractions to decimals, pixel art. Students had to convert fractions to decimals. When their answer was correct, a part of the picture would fill in and the box turns blue. If it was incorrect, the box would stay white. This would allow students to check their own work and kept the students motivated since they wanted to see the complete picture. Please click on science. When possible, there have been material pickups so that the students can engage in hands-on learning at home. As an alternative to this, students have been encouraged to use materials from their own home to engage in learning, as seen in the oil spill video here. In this video, they've been using various materials from their home to clean up an oil spill. After cleaning up the spill, students calculated what it was the cost to clean up the spill and shared their reflections. Another way students engage in hands-on learning is through breakout rooms, where students in school use the materials to investigate or explore and share their screen with students as at home, as seen in, in the images here. Please click on social studies. Students are developing historical perspective through inquiry and research in the media center. So these were some of the fifth grade projects from the ancient civilizations inquiry. Please click on the next slide. And then in a sixth grade project, they worked in the media center to engage students through station work with students who are remote paired up with people who, students who are in person. Now, for the next slide, I'd like to introduce Carrie Taylor, sixth grade teacher.
Hi, everyone. I'm sure as many of you know, I might be one of those veteran teachers that Ann Chen was referring to tonight, and I'm very happy to be here. I'm going to be talking to you a little bit about the social emotional well-being of our students. Social emotional learning, as you all know, is using a set of skills to manage your emotions, to learn empathy for others, and to solve problems effectively. You may be asking yourself how the grade five, six staff are supporting our school's social emotional well-being? Well, here is Sheri Dempsey to tell you how we are meeting the needs of our students.
So Wednesday homeroom is held each week so that there is a full class activity. This allows for both cohorts to interact with each other and the teacher at the same time. These activities help to check in on students' social emotional well-being through various teacher-created mood meters. You see the snowman one up at the top right, in addition to the ruler mood meter. Homeroom also allows us to continue in our community service where students focus on giving back and relating to each other's feelings, such as Make-A-Wish or the AT Foundation. There are various activities such as Would You Rather that are used to open up communication in order to allow students to feel comfortable and allow teachers to learn more about their students. Students participate in grade level events. These are done both virtually and in person. An example of this was a grade level cahoot with questions made by students as a trivia challenge. Students came dressed in fun holiday gear and competed about various topics that they created on their own. Watching the smiles and laughter was wonderful. Another activity that teachers are using to connect with students is the Jamboard. The Jamboard lessons allow students to share their feelings about topics such as, how do I feel this year? And I have a dream that one day, which was a check-in for a Martin Luther King Jr. lesson. Teachers use various check-ins such as mood meters, zoomer hand gestures to see how students are feeling. They listen to students and allow them to share their needs. When students need help either virtually or through Zoom, teachers will reach out to the student, the parent, and the guidance department to see what else needs to be done. And now I'd like to hand it back over to Carrie Taylor.
Well, as you can see from Sheri, the social emotional well-being of our children is definitely being met and is our number one priority. However, so is the social emotional health of our staff. So teachers spend time checking in with each other to ensure a healthy social emotional well-being for each other. There are many ways this is being done. One of the first ways is, is that we've started to utilize our team meetings each day. This allows us to speak with each other and gives us a greater sense of community while talking about our children. Second way that we do it is teachers and our principals have gotten together in small groups and have started to give each other small prizes or little tokens or gifts sometimes, just to let each other know that you're doing a great job and to check in with each other. Another way was in October, each staff member was given a pumpkin. Not every staff member liked this, just to let you know. Because at the bottom of the pumpkin, I put on each pumpkin, on 100 pumpkins, something kind to do for other staff members. And the student council promoted this to help the idea that doing for others really helps each other feel better. So each staff member was given a job to do, and it was really neat to see the staff come back and tell us who they had to help or what the reaction was of the people that they did for. Student Council in Sunshine provided everyone with the bagel breakfast. This allowed teachers some time to take a break and enjoy each other's company. There was a bulletin board that was posted in the lobby to display people's hands and to put up people's names on the hands that they thought needed our good thoughts. Throughout the month, teachers would discuss their hands with other colleagues for support. The Ruler Committee contacted all staff with great projects and ideas for working together and with the children. The ideas were well-received and enjoyed by all. As you can see from the last picture down on the right side there, the staff in the five, six grades are doing a great job working together to ensure a healthy community for everyone. And now you'll hear from Christine Doherty about our Wednesdays. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Hi, everyone. I'm Christine Doherty. I'm a sixth grade teacher, and I would like to share with you what we do on Wednesdays. So as we gathered information for the slide and then tried to condense it all into one slide, I thought to myself that if only we could title this slide, What We Don't Do on Wednesdays, my segment of the presentation would be so short or nonexistent. However, in all seriousness, I cannot stress enough or even adequately convey to you how valuable Wednesdays are for both students and teachers. Wednesdays are so vital to the success of the rest of the week, and what takes place on Wednesdays ensures that this entire learning experience is accessible and the best it could be for all. So I was trying to think of an analogy to highlight how essential and critical this day is. I thought of describing it as the super glue that holds it all together, or the powerful engine that makes sure all the cars stay on track and don't derail. But again, whatever words I would use would certainly fall short in expressing how beneficial this day is. But I'm going to try to give you a glimpse of some of what we accomplish on any given Wednesday. Now, you could see from our slide that there are a lot of bulleted points here, so I'm going to try to highlight a few of them and condense a few, combine a few, just to keep it streamlined. But first, I'd like to talk about School G. A lot of our time on Wednesdays is spent making sure that all of our lessons are organized in School G, so that information is easy for students to find. The site can be hard to navigate at times, and the students are getting better at it every day. And we do our best to ensure that it is as user-friendly as possible, so that students can find their assignments and your resources we post and know where to locate important announcements. Also, Wednesdays, we spend a great deal of time collaborating and planning with one another. As teachers, we need to plan and collaborate in order to make sure that our curriculum is engaging for both in-person and remote learning. Very often, you could find us modeling and demonstrating lessons to actually see how it will look in a virtual hybrid classroom. We try to anticipate any issues and troubles to those before we go live, if you, if you will. We also meet as full teams to discuss student achievement, analyze data to help design our instruction, and address any student concerns that we may have. And although this might sound insignificant, we spend a lot of time on Wednesdays gathering materials for our students, especially for those hands-on experiences. We need to gather materials for students who are fully virtual or remote, and also we need to provide materials for individuals, just to make sure that we are still providing a safe, a COVID-safe environment in which they could have that hands-on experience without necessarily sharing the materials. Also, on Wednesdays, we focus a lot on communication. So communication is a key component of what we do. We communicate with parents and students often, and Wednesdays offer us more flexibility in accommodating parents for virtual meetings and phone conferences. It also gives us an opportunity to reach out to students and provide them feedback on their work, on multiple assignments, even missing assignments. We reach out very often trying to, you know, get those students to turn on assignment, turn in assignments that they may have forgotten about, you know, or just are delayed in submitting them. And of course, a good part of our Wednesdays, a focus on professional development. Chris Pelisi and Dan Lanain have been fabulous resources as we all learn to explore this new world together. As lifelong learners ourselves, we are all eager to see what new programs and techniques are available for us to utilize to enhance our lessons. Many of these new technologies and platforms, you have heard us talk about already tonight in this presentation, and I know you're going to learn about more as we continue to share information with you this evening. And of course, the most important aspect of Wednesday is the time we get to spend with our students. We focus a lot on that social emotional well-being of our students, especially in homeroom. And in a moment, I would like to share with you a short video clip that Mrs. Spadavecchia, you know, taped, speaking to that, just speaking to the importance of connecting with our students and making sure that socially, emotionally, they are, they are doing well and letting them know that we are here for them. We also host office hours for all of our students. These office hours allow us to provide more opportunities for small group instruction or even individualized instruction. We are very often able to pre-teach topics on Wednesdays, reinforce or reteach more challenging concepts. I know, in addition, the music department has been wonderful utilizing the group function on School G to enhance their choral program. In particular, the NISMA singers meet with their teachers for coaching, and on Wednesdays are able to coach 15-plus students at a time to help them review their music and do the best that they can at their performances. And of course, Wednesdays allow for that opportunity for students to privately meet for OT, PT, counseling, all those things which are so important in educating the entire student. But before we get to the, well, we have the video clip of Mrs. Spadavecchia, but after that, we'll just, if we could transition right into, I thought it was important for you to hear from some of our students as they share their thoughts on Wednesdays. So we asked a few of them to share what they think about Wednesdays. And I have to tell you, if you walked in the video, just think that the students spoke extemporaneously. They weren't scripted. They truly spoke from the heart, and I hope you see just how important, truly important the day not only is for teachers, but for our students. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Spadavecchia and students, and then come back and wrap it up to introduce you to our next presenters.
Hi, my name is Chelsea. I'm a sixth-
On Wednesday morning, as when we meet as a class, our grade, in part because we get to see everybody smiling at the same exact time, which is something we haven't really had too much of on a daily basis. In addition, we start off every meeting just asking kids to let us know how they are feeling. We usually use a mood meter or memes of different facial expressions, and it gives children the opportunity to really communicate with us how we are feeling, because it's that private chat message going back and forth. Once we have done that, you know, we really have expressed to the kids that how they feel does matter and that we're looking to see how they are feeling from day to day, in addition just to those weeks. We also get a chance to build our classroom community on our Wednesday morning meetings. We ask questions. We, we share things. Students are much more willing to share because it's through a chat message that everybody else gets to read. And we usually just have a good time getting to see everybody and checking in every week.
... and today I'm going to be telling you what I like about Wednesdays. The first thing I like about Wednesdays is that we can stop by at homeroom and office hour Zooms. During homeroom, we can communicate with our teachers, our friends, and play fun games. During office hours, we can ask our teachers any questions that we may have about any assignment. I also like that since we don't have as many Zooms throughout the day, we get to schedule our day how we want to. We get to do work during the morning, through the afternoon, without any interruptions. I also really enjoy that we're able to make up past assignments, so that won't affect our grade. This is what I like about Wednesdays.
Hi, I'm Shona, and I'm from sixth grade. I look forward to going to my Wednesday Zooms because I know if I need help with my tests, my teachers could help me. I also like to join my teachers' Zooms on Wednesdays with my friends and joke around a little bit with my teachers.
Hi, I'm Maddie. I'm from sixth grade, and Mrs. Doherty is my homeroom teacher. What I like about Wednesdays is when I go on Zoom for homeroom, we either get to, we sometimes play cahoots, we do Would You Rathers? And what I really like about Wednesday is it's like a break before I have to go into school. And if I need help with my work for Wednesday, I can just hop on a Zoom for that class.
Hi, I'm Daniel, and I am a sixth grade student here in this school, well, a new school to me, still getting used to it. And today, we will be talking about Wednesdays, one of my favorite days. Right. So as you can see, Wednesdays are like a helping day, which means there aren't really like, like big Zoom classes, they're like really small ones. It could be only you and your teacher, or it could be just a mini group and your teacher. Also, I really like in Wednesday as to how the teachers help me or you guys complete our homework assignments, not only that help us get better.
So those are just two testimonials to show you just how valuable Wednesdays are. You know, there's so much more that we do that I could elaborate on, but hopefully this gives you a good picture of what we are able to accomplish on Wednesdays. So I am going to turn it over now to Erin Connolly and Brian Perry, and I believe they are going to talk to you about-
Our meeting's-
Hi, good evening. Brian Perry, middle school technology teacher. As you can see from the presentation, apps, programs, and instructional technology in general is an integral part of what keeps education excelling in the Nanyou at schools. And during the other half of the slide, we'll show you all the strides that everyone has taken in regards to learning this new environment. But I was tasked to illustrate some of the hurdles our community has gone over to succeed in the instructional technology realm. During the start of the 2021 school year, our knowledge of new apps and access to computer tech, technology was tiered very much like a typical classroom. Some had access to gigabit connections and multiple devices, while others had yet to pick up their Chromebooks. The amount of changes in regards to instructional technology was enough to induce panic and fear into the hearts of even the most tech savvy. The tech behemoth, Google, had a hard time keeping up at times and had to take mindful moments while we were all trying to start our instruction. Our main platform was switched from Google Classroom to School G, we hoped that integrated apps would function, making school lives easier. But due to growing pains, we had to keep some items separate, mainly in the ways of our gradebooks. On top of the many functions that were buried deep within multiple levels of the program, I always like to compare Google to like an iPhone, where everything's just laid out and easy, whereas an Android phone, there's so many things you can customize and change, but it's just usually built in deeper. So like the Android device, School G is full of customizations and functions, which makes finding what you want an arduous process at the beginning and different experiences over multiple users. The F and students quickly felt- The F and students quickly felt like we were learning at the end of a fire hose, and that was just the programs we were using to teach our curriculum. As we scrambled to figure out how to make curriculum hybrid-friendly, we had to learn the methods of delivery from all these programs popping up, taking advantage of the online need. The hard part was knowing when you could use the help of colleagues that were, they were giving you. Jargon was evolving, Zoom issues were occurring, not all bad, many were very humanizing, but still a distraction. Attendance in a hybrid model was even more important, but a big use of time to get it right. Hopefully, that gives you a big picture, but I don't want to dwell too long on that setup since there have been so many successes over our start. Luckily, Erin gets to talk about all the ways we've come together and excel with our technology use. So, I'll let Erin take over from here.
Great. Thanks, Brian. Good evening. My name is Erin Connolly. I'm a teacher in the Five Six Academy. While Brian did touch upon some of the challenges and hurdles that we faced and we continue to face, there have been plenty of successes here in the world of education, this new online learning platform. I am so thrilled to say that Nanuet, as usual, hit the ground running. From the minute we ended up in this model in March, Nanuet provided our staff with ongoing professional developments through the summer and into today. And we're ever so thankful for Chris Pelisi and Daniel Lanain, who orchestrate these professional developments for us so that we can learn how to become teachers online. As teachers for, as I've learned tonight, I'm a veteran teacher, but as teachers who've been teaching for as long as we have, this is a complete revitalization of how we've learned to teach. So, with the help of tech-savvy people, we've really made great strides. And then, we have a database on School G of all of these PD's archives. So, when we need a refresher or a perusal, it's there, and Chris has laid that out so nicely for us. We, progress is being made in a lot of the new programs. Like Brian mentioned, School G was a new program for the staff and students. We have adjusted nicely learning and navigating through this tool. And we have also, luckily enough, in Nanuet, we've had a lot of background in technology use in our curriculum. So, we are continuing to use a lot of those programs such as Success Maker and Lexia and Achieve and Raz Kids. We also use Xern and iXL, which I know some people mentioned earlier. We also, in addition to other cool ways to engage students, we continue using Kahoot, we use Flipgrid, we use Kami and Jamboard. So, there's a lot of ways to enhance our teaching online and to engage the children. One of the really biggest things is that, I said this kind of earlier, we really had to take what we've been doing traditionally and reformat that to make it online accessible. So, that means we had to reformat, reformat all of our assignments, all of our assessments. So, the good part again in Nanuet, we kind of broke up in task forces and worked up in different teams so that we could divide and conquer and get this done successfully. So, we have teams working on our curriculum and formatting it so it can be digitalized for us to use. And what also is said here, and it's true for what we're doing right now, luckily, I guess, for technology, we are, we're able to continue to run our school and our classes because via Zooms and all these programs, essentially, it can be done anywhere. So, we do. Sometimes we have children zooming, you know, at different family houses or in a car, or if we're quarantined, life can still go on. So, we really are lucky to have this way of learning for us. And as someone said before, we have breakout rooms, which is a great tool also that the kids really enjoy. They feel empowered that they get to go off with their peers and they can collaborate with one another. And then, it's empowering for the teachers because we can still work in small groups of students, even if we're not physically with them like we're used to. And we can remediate, modify, give modifications on assessments, and we can also challenge students who need some higher level learning. So, those are, that's another great forum. And the ongoing communication has just opened widely. We've always been used to communicating with families, but now the students through School G can email their teachers. So, we are constantly in contact with the students. And so, they're learning to problem solve, ask questions, and be engaged in their own learning. So, while there is a little bit of definitely challenges daily, there are so many successes that Nanuet and us staff should be proud of on how we have hit the ground running and are doing the best we can in this new environment. So, thanks for hearing us out tonight. And next, I'm going to introduce Ms. Ruby Aday and our teacher here at the academy, and she will present her slide.
Hi there. I'm Ruby Aday. I'm one of the middle school art teachers, and I'm going to discuss a little bit how we're managing assignments this year in these platforms. So, the students are able to submit their assignments in School G and feedback is given there as well. We're able, as teachers, to send messages to students via School G about incomplete work or unsubmitted work directly. The feedback that we give students is immediate and often as possible, which is something that we, when we had like the traditional model, weren't able to do, but now it's kind of at our fingertips at all times. The use of Google Forms and School G for assignments or assessments provide immediate feedback for both the students and the teachers. So, not only are we able to communicate to the students quickly, but they can also communicate with us through their messaging so we can give them that feedback and then they can fix whatever they need to and they can resubmit if necessary. Students are also asked to submit photos of work in School G. I know for art, we have portfolios, they submit everything, and there's a way to give feedback right away. In other domains, it looks like there's, like in this one picture with some spelling words, it looks like there's that spelling stuff, and then the teacher is able to give feedback about any kind of misspellings or whatever needs to be corrected. We're also able to give feedback right on Zoom directly. So, in this one piece right here, there's Stacy Lang giving some feedback for Home and Careers, turning in an assignment on Zoom and is, it looks like, wow, A+ she put on there. So, she's get, able to give that feedback right away directly to the student. And so, you know, we have this right at our fingertips, this communication that we didn't necessarily have back in the traditional model, which is actually pretty nice. Going to give it up to Robin Capazudo for the next slide. She is a fifth grade ELA and science teacher.
Thank you, Ruby. All right. So, since our shift over to hybrid due to the pandemic, all assessments, both formative and summative, had to be reinvented because of learning locations, both for students and sometimes teachers, as well as lack of handing out materials such as paper. All of this required a lot of advanced planning, a lot of troubleshooting, professional development, collaboration, as well as teachers getting out of their comfort zone. In terms of the day-to-day formative assessments, teachers can't simply walk around the room just to see students' notes in their notebook and see if they're understanding it, a quick show of hands or a thumbs up any longer. We really have been utilizing breakout rooms where we can facilitate small groups, as you can see on the far-left visual. Zoom chats or polls posing questions, discussion boards, as you can see from the middle-left visual, where students not only answer questions, but they can also leave comments and also pose new questions to each other and comment and interact. Other ways formative assessments have changed are Zoom reactions such as a thumbs up or a thumbs down and raising their digital hands. This allows both in-class and at-home hybrid and fully virtual students to participate as a whole class. Although it is extremely difficult from a planning and teaching perspective, the hybrid model has allowed for alternative assessments, choice and modifications, such as questions read, visuals, chunking information, translation, and much more. In terms of the longer term, the longer-term summative assessments, those have also changed. Instead of traditional pencil and paper assessments, there are many more various options on School G, as you can see from the middle-right-hand visual. Multiple choice, true and false, matching, ordering, fill in the blank, and these are just the tip of the iceberg for options. Modifications for both ENL and special education students, like questions read right on the assessments. Visuals and chunking can now be done on the assessments as well, and each student can go at his or her own pace instead of the traditional way of having to wait till everybody that gets that modification is done to move on to the next question. It also allows for the student to have information repeated to them as much as they need. Additionally, breakout rooms can also be utilized either for giving modifications or simply answering a student's question and not disturbing the other students while taking their assessments. Students who get alternatively assessed or who have needs for modifications aren't seen as different because one individual's assessment may look a little bit different. It's on their individual screen and they wouldn't know the difference that they're getting a different version. Lastly, rubrics on School G, as you can see from the right-hand visual, give students access to letting the teachers assess and provide comments. Teachers can type or give verbal comments right then and there that are in the moment, and students can access this whenever they need to. So, I'm going to now hand it over to Elizabeth Zoda, who is the ENL and Spanish teacher, to speak about how we're communicating with students and their families.
Thank you. Good evening. Communication is very important, and we communicate with our families in a variety of ways. School G email is used to communicate with the students. Email blasts through School G and eSchool are sent to alert students and families of upcoming assessments and assignments that are due. Students are also reminded to attend office hours if the teacher feels there will be a benefit or if the student needs any extra help, as you can see in the picture on the bottom left. Emails are also sent to students who are behind in completing their work. Teachers in the academy use discussion boards and the chat in Zoom to get feedback and foster communication, conversation between all students. That's what you can see above the video and on the right-hand side. Planners are also used for students to write down important information and assignments. This is an important practice because School G and/or the Wi-Fi is not always readily accessible. Enhancing parent communication with our bilingual families has become a priority. Bilingual Spanish-speaking ENL teachers, NTAs, have been instrumental with helping parents stay informed and involved. The ENL staff acts as the liaison between the school and the family to help parents understand district, school, and classroom issues. The ENL teachers use the Talking Points app. This has allowed our teachers to stay in constant communication with families, and the families feel comfortable communicating with the school. Here is a short video to show you how the app works.
Talking Point is a nonprofit organization, and our mission is to meaningfully connect families and teachers for student success across technology and language barriers. Talking Points is a multilingual texting tool that teachers use to communicate with their students' families via text messages. Teachers use an app to send messages in English. These are delivered to families in text messages, translated into their home languages. Families can reply in their home languages, and teachers will receive their responses in English.
Talking Points is free for teachers and it's easy to get started. We have built a tool that bridges the school community in this digital world.
Oh, sure. So, Talking Points is a computer internet-based platform that allows classroom teachers and schools to send messages to parents and guardians, write them in English, and then the parents and guardians receive them in their native language. So, you can send out a school announcement or a classroom announcement about homework, write it in English, and every parent will receive it in their native language, and then they're actually able to respond back in their native language via text message to the teacher or the school, and then we'll receive that translated back in English.
It's been really good because like I had questions in my head, which I would have had to waited for the next day to get to her. And I was just like, oh, by the way, the newsletter said X, Y, and Z. Is this true? And what colors will we be using for the holiday show? And she got right back to me and I was like, oh, this is really cool.
Join us by the.
That app has been very beneficial in communicating with our ENL families. Can we go to the next slide?
Talking Point.
So, as an ENL update, the ENL teachers and staff have continued to adapt lessons and materials in order to make content accessible to students using our new platforms and technology. For example, the picture on the left, originally, that was a summary, but I took it and I adapted the language and I added visuals. All students are required to read the summary, but I have the English language learners use a website to answer questions as they read. This keeps them accountable, and I gain immediate data on their students' strengths and weaknesses. Using this website, I can also place questions right next to where the answers are found. Jamboard allows for collaboration and sharing. Students express their thoughts, and I can review them verbally, but also write down what they are saying so students can hear and also read. Entering English language learners, as you can see in the picture on the top right, rearrange sticky notes on a jamboard to practice forming sentences. The ENL staff uses data from Raz, Lexia, Rosetta Stone, the Team Workbook, and more to inform instruction, specifically in academic support. Additionally, there is constant communication and collaboration with the content classroom teachers to adapt daily lessons. And now, I'd like to reintroduce Principal Ann Chen.
Hello. We've gotten to the end of the presentation. I just want to say thank you so much for reviewing all of these things with us. I want to also, though, thank Chris Pelisi because without his PD and support with everything, we would not be where we are. But I also want to thank the district, Dr. Cahill, Dr. Fox, because they've made it okay for us to take risks. They've made it okay for us to try new programs. They've allowed us to get more materials and even be creative with our approaches. So, it really is a collective effort that we find ourselves able to present, provide such a wonderful program that is going quite well. I'm just so happy we could share it with you tonight. So, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
Ann, this is, this is Ann. First of all, I have to say, wow, this was, this was an incredible presentation. I mean, it's almost like, like a different language, what's going on in schools today. I mean, we're so used to everybody being in the classroom, everybody learning, but this is, this is mind-blowing. I have to thank you. I have to thank your staff. This was just incredible. And I'm, and I'm always so proud of our staff because I think you really do go above and beyond the call of duty. And, and I know just by doing, just by showing us a little tidbit of what's going on in the school, I can't imagine the kids are, the kids have got to be ecstatic about coming to school and about learning in this new environment. You, you make it so appealing to them. It certainly was really appealing to me just watching the kinds of things that's happening in the classrooms. And, and I'm amazed at, at what you're doing, and, and you guys have been on board. And I do agree with you about Chris because I know he's been remarkable throughout the district to make sure everybody gets the right professional development, but your teachers were extraordinary. So, thank you, Ann, for leading them, and thank your teachers for this really incredible presentation tonight. Anyone else like to, to comment? You have to, you have to unmute. Sue, you have to unmute.
Sorry. See, I need the technology help too, right? It was great to hear from some of your veteran teachers that I've met and know so well, and also some of the new teachers, how, what a great job they all did. This was an overwhelming task, and to see it all come together is just mind, mind-boggling, really. I, you know, I love the idea that you're beginning to pair up students in the classroom with students at home, all these different ways of getting kids to engage in learning is really just so amazing. So, thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? No? Okay. Well, thank you, Ann, and thank you to your staff. That was really remarkable. I know a lot of hard work went into that. So, thank you.
Nice job, everybody. It was a great job.
Yeah, it was great. Thank you.
Next up is a second reading and approval of our new policy 4765, online distance and remote learning. I need a motion. Moved by Adrian, second by Lynn. Anybody have any questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. And the next is a second reading and approval of the following policies. Revised Policy 0110 Sexual Harassment, New Policies, Regulations, and Exhibit 0110.1 Sexual Harassments of Students, and 0110.2 Sexual Harassments of Employees, and Revised Exhibit 0115-E Student Bullying and Harassment Complaint Form. I need a motion. and Harassment Complaint Form. I need a motion.
Sue, I'll move it.
Moved by Ed and Sue. Anybody have any questions on those policies? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Anybody on the board have any unfinished business they'd like to bring up? Okay, new business. Rockland County School Boards, Christine.
So we had our legislative webinar and I, and I think several of you attended on January 11th. And we actually overall had good participation. We believe there were about 40 attendees. And we also had our six presenters, the executive director, and we actually got six legislators to join us. We had Assemblyman, our new Assemblyman, Mike Lawler, Assemblyman Ken Zabrowski, Carl Bravenak and Colin Schmidt, and then Senator James Scoofus and a new Senator, a newly elected Elijah Reichlin Melnick. So they all attended and, and they, and they spoke as well. Unfortunately, there was a little tech issue, as technology can be a little fickle, that they were not able to record, unfortunately, record everything that went along with it. But there, the PowerPoint presentation is up on the Rockland County School Board's website and it was also sent out, you know, so if you would like to view it. But overall, the feedback was positive from the attendees as well as legislators. They felt it was informative and, you know, we're obviously continuing to work with them to advocate on a few major topics that we discussed with them. And I'll just quickly just go over them. But again, if you'd like a little more information, Rockland County School Board's website has the PowerPoint presentation. But, you know, obviously the major topic was about the COVID advocating for COVID relief because as we all know, everything that is associated with COVID is costing us a tremendous amount of money and time. So it's such a financial drain on districts that we really need some relief. And that's what we're really advocating, you know, the state and federal government for. And we're really concerned about the state cuts because we were thinking it might be as high as 20%. And Mario just told us it's actually five. So it's not as bad as I guess we thought, but it's still, it's this year as well as next year, right? I think is what you, you just told us. So we're still getting cuts when we need more and more help. So that was a big, obviously a big issue. The whole thing about transportation aid in the spring, obviously we weren't transporting students, but we never knew when they were going back to school. So there was, there's a whole issue with, with trying to get reimbursement from the state on transportation aid. So that was a, that is definitely something we're hoping to, to see relief from. So we were asking the legislators to advocate on our behalf. The regional cost index is always an issue of where does Rockland really fall in the state? And, you know, we are promoting for Rockland and Westchester to really be in line with New York City and Long Island. Because if you look, there's a couple of graphs on the PowerPoint that you can look at to see where we fall in terms of housing values, property taxes, rent, et cetera. And then another, the last part that we spoke with them about was unfunded mandates because the unfunded mandates just keep coming every year, you know, with more time being lost, you know, and, and obviously money having to be spent on these things that the, that they mandate us to do in the school districts, but they don't give any funding, you know, behind it. So that was, you know, there, there's a couple of details on the slides again for that. So if anyone has any questions or if anyone's interested in finding out a little bit more, you know, you can contact.
I just, just, just want everyone to know that Christine Camilleri was one of the presenters and did a fabulous job of presenting her information. So thank you, Christine, for doing that. And just for everybody out there, this is just one of the things that school boards, and in this case, Rockland County School Boards does every year to make sure we advocate for more funds from not only Albany, but, you know, from the federal government. So this was really important that our legislators hear our concerns. And Christine, you did a great job. And I know, I'm surprised there was only 40 members because our whole board was there.
Nanuet had the best representation, which they often do at events, I have to say. We really have, yeah, a lot of dedicated people who are willing to give of their time to, to learn more and to be part of this. So yeah, and I thank you all for your support and for being there too.
It was, it was really well done, very well done. And our legislators, of course, are, you know, all listening. And we had two brand new ones, so it was really important.
If you don't mind, if I could just add, I received an email today from Senator Elijah Reichlin Melnick inviting you and I to talk with, with him about our budget needs.
Sure.
For the future. So I'm. Yeah. I think that's great. I think that's great that as a brand new senator in our, in our neighborhood, he's asking for us to have a conversation and.
He's very interested in communication and he's.
Yeah. He's really, yeah, seems like it. So really.
That would be great. Relationships are good.
Right. Doctrinate early.
Yes.
New life. Thank you, Christine. Our next is New York State School Board Association, National School Board Association. It's almost like, where do you begin? As far as the New York State School Boards Association, the governor did a state of the, state of the state last week, but he didn't do his normal one. He did five little snippets. He did five different days of talking about, you know, the state of the, of the state. And very little was talked about in education, just a couple of little things here and, here and there. Now, his budget comes out today supposedly. I haven't seen it yet, but between now and the next board meeting, we should have a glimpse of what it, what it means for Nanuet and what it means as far as what the cuts are going to be. So we will, that needs to be seen. As far as national is concerned, we, since last time, we have now a Democratic-controlled Senate. The two senators from Georgia, the Democratic senators were elected. So that puts the, the Senate at a 50-50 numbers with the tiebreaker being the Vice President-elect Harris. So we shall see how that works. I did see today that both Schumer and McConnell agreed on, on sharing powers in the Senate. So we shall see how that goes. President-elect Biden has a, has a stimulus package out there, $1.9 trillion. In this package is finally help for states and schools. I know we got a little bit of money the last go-around, but the, we all know the deficits even in New York alone is $15 billion just for COVID-related expenses. So it, so I'm hopeful that if it does pass, then we can get some money from the federal government, which will allow us to, you know, take care of some of the cuts that we may very well be seeing on, on the state level. One of the things in, in President-elect Biden's program is to, to increase dramatically our Title I and our IDEA monies. And for those who don't know, our Title I money is for disadvantaged populations and our IDEA money is for our children with, with special needs. So if we do get money from the federal government on both of those, both of those programs, it will be a great help. The IDEA program, when it was instituted, it's now about 60 some odd years ago, the federal government back then, 65 years ago or whatever, promised that they would pay 40% of the tab for special needs kids. And at this point, they're up to about 11%. So they're nowhere near what they promised many, many years ago. So if we can keep the pressure on, and we will with our federal representatives, to make sure that they seriously look at making sure those dollars are increased, it'll go a long way to help our taxpayers. Because let's face it, the bottom line is, the reason everybody's taxes go up every year is because the federal government and the state government are not fulfilling their responsibilities, which they said they would do. So it's really, that's why it's really important to talk about, you know, advocating like Rockland County School Board does. And I have to tell everybody, this board, this Nanuet board does that. They are very active at making sure they're reaching out to our elected officials and let them know what's going on. That's my report. Local government, anything new going on in the local government? Okay. So next on our, does anyone else have any other new business they want to bring up? Okay, next is, I need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Christine, second by Ed. Thank you all. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good seeing everybody. See you at the next board meeting.
Bye, everybody.